Call this meeting in order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, please be seated. Welcome to the July 20th, 2020, school board meeting for the Richland Bean Blossom Community School Corporation. Let the rule call reflect that all board members are present. Our next item would be visitor comments. If you're a visitor and you'd like to make a comment, we ask that you come down to the front here. There is an X where you can stand in a directional mic if I can make a comment.
Matt is going to call the names out.
Oh.
I'm sorry, yeah. Our director or our business manager has a list of names as you came in and you checked off that you wanted to speak. Mr. Irwin will be calling you up in that order. Okay. I apologize for the confusion. Yeah, don't be nervous.
I can't read.
Are you my timer?
Yeah, just see right back there. Yeah, you know, talk right into.
Can you hear me? Do I need to take this? Can I take this off?
I think the Monroe County requirement is that we have to keep them on.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
You try to speak a little louder.
Okay. Just put a hand up if you can't hear me.
Sorry.
I can slow down. All right, my name is Jessica Weisner. I'm a parent with three students in three buildings and in the past was a member of the school PTO boards. First of all, I would like to appeal to you to please check in with your staff, those who will be carrying out the reopening plan, who were not given an online option. Now more than ever, they need to be heard and understood so that they can communicate what they need to confidently help Edgewood open safely. Second, I will preface this by saying I have not yet decided what my kids are doing in a couple of weeks, but my ultimate goal is for them to be in school with their Edgewood family. However, I need your help as I'm finding it difficult to convince myself that it's safe to send them when my husband and I are still ordered to work from home. Also, my understanding is that the Monroe County Public Health Order has limited indoor gatherings like this to less than 100 people. The reopening plan tells me that over 600 kids and staff will be able to safely and effectively start school in these same buildings in two weeks. These things are contradicting in my mind, so I would like to ask the board, please forward the data they used to determine the reopening school plan to parents. Third, in the reopening plan, I saw a plan for the schools to open for the year as well as an online option. What I didn't see was a what-if plan. One of my biggest concerns besides health is all the potential academic disruptions. I would like to see an academic plan for what-ifs such as how will my child receive their education if they are forced to stay home for 10 to 14 days when the online option is Apex? How will instruction happen in the classroom if their teacher has to stay home for 10 to 14 days? What is the plan if a school or schools need to close? I know there were some general comments in the plan, but I would like to see actual plans in place before I have to make my decision on July 24th. Lastly, I know many schools are delaying opening or all starting online. I'm not saying these are the right options. However, if all of the students starting online is a possibility and would keep the online and in-school students in the same classes with their peers and teachers rather than just a few Apex students who are left out of all Edgewood activities as they are trying to protect their families, I would most certainly support that. I would also like to petition that you please consider allowing them to participate in activities as the state has approved. The sports my kids are involved in such as tennis have a much lower dose of exposure and these kids are already feeling disconnected by choosing Apex. In conclusion, I appreciate the Friday updates, but along those same lines, I would also appreciate hearing from the school that they are aware of the changing COVID and school opening trends. I would also appreciate transparency in letting us know if any changes are being considered or not, as many parents are wondering and would like to be able to make plans for their families. Thank you.
Very much. Is there anyone else who would make a comment? Seeing none, we'll continue. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the June 15th, 2020, regular school board meeting, the financial treasures report of June 2020, the claims.
I've got it right here, Mr. President, I'm sorry. I had moved approval for gross wages on June 5th, 2020, for $698,840.20 for gross wages on June 19th, 2020, for $481,559.53 for prepaid for June 1st through June 30th, for $937,205.43 for claims for vouchers on July 20th, 2020, $194,609.28 for Hills vouchers on 7/21/2020 is $455,954.78 for a grand total of $2,768,169.22. I had moved approval, sir.
I'll second.
Thank you. We also have on the consent agenda consideration of donations. $1,300 from the Ellisville Christian Church for COVID-19 PPE, personal protection equipment, for students and staff, $200 from Tri-Cappa for the high school STEAM curriculum initiative, $200 from Tri-Cappa for the high school art award spring show, a case of grocery bags from Kroger for the summer feeding meals, a $100 gift card for summer feeding food truck from an anonymous donor, 2,700 reusable masks and five shields, protective glasses and two gallons of hand sanitizer from the Monroe County Emergency Management, and 10,000 masks and 10 gallons of hand sanitizer from Cook Medical. We also have personnel, D, resignation, retirements, non-renewals, leaves and terminations 1 through 6, and E, personnel appointments, transfers, 1 through... 43. It's in Roman numerals. Are there any motions?
I have, I'd like to table E3.
E3? Okay, there's a motion to table E3. Is there a second? Motion moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of tabling E3, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, we have a motion to, for the remainder of the consent agenda.
Excluding.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Moving seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to recognize two teachers who are retiring.
Please.
Rhonda Canair and Steve Brewer have been with the corporation for many, many years and it's always difficult when we lose quality teachers to retirement. Just the experience and knowledge that they take with them is just a little difficult for us, but on the other hand, they deserve retirement and we wish them the best and just so thankful that they've worked with us for the time that they did. And then also Dirk Ackerman has an introduction he would like to make.
First, I'd like to comment that from, I've actually worked with both Rhonda Canair and Steve Brewer and obviously Steve for the last several years and Rhonda for many years at the elementary and that's a deep hole in RBB's teaching staff, so we're going to miss them greatly. To lose Steve Brewer and Larry Demoss in the same year from the English department is just an incredible loss, so. But Steve's really excited, a little apprehensive, but excited to begin a new life as a retired teacher, so I know, we're going to try to find ways to get him back in, we'll see. But for now, I would like to introduce to you our newest staff member, special education teacher, Megan Manuary. Megan comes to us, she first taught at Brown County for a few years and then she's most recently been at Bedford North Lawrence and is both special education teacher and department chair, so we had a great interview with Megan, we are really excited to have her. She attended a meeting with us today, so she was able to meet the rest of the department and she didn't back out, so I think we're okay. So, this is Megan, I know you can't see her very well, but this is Megan Manuary.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome, Megan.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always great to bring in good people and it is sad to lose some really, really good teachers. I know that for indications, they both did so with heavy hearts because they do care a lot about RBB and wish them the best. Okay, our next item is the business manager's report, so turn it over to Mr. Irwin.
All right, how you guys doing? I put on your desk up there the cash flows and color version for you and we'll just highlight through them real quick. And the education fund, and we'll talk through the three major funds, the education funds, things have stayed steady. We did have a higher payroll this month with retirees being paid out with that first round. I did want to point out that our projected year-end cash balance right now is on pace to reach our, closer to our goal of one month's operating balance, which is great news. And the debt service, I wanted to point out a couple of things, we did receive in our June settlement as well as the tax anticipation warrant, you'll see that on the income side of things at the top of that. Cash balance is artificially high right now with the TAW, but that will be received back out at the year end to the bond bank. Then operations, if you want to flip to that one, the third page. On the income side, we received in our June tax draw, which was normal. On the expense side, notice we did make the transfer to Rainy Day as we had planned at the beginning of the year. We're on track. As to what we expected with projected year-end, even in the COVID era, and we continue to adjust with some of the navigating, some of the extra cleaning and different things that we need to do. The last page I did include on there is the bond sale review, which is a document that was provided to us by our underwriter, Stiefel. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things on that real quick for you, is that we did get the best rate by going public and getting rated in comparison to the other financing options listed out. And this did save the school corporation quite a bit of money in interest. And I did just want to say I really appreciate the efforts of the Stiefel team and our bond counsel and everyone involved that we're a joy to work with, but I wanted to provide you just a high level view of those things and you can see some comparison of how that worked out for us.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next item is the 2021 budget calendar, so back to you, Mr. Irwin.
Let's meet again. Just, I have that there in front of you, we laid that out for this 2021 budget. We're already working on this and we've already, we've got obviously the June 30 cash balances and we're working on the gateway forms, just some of our other items like capital projects and bus replacement. I did put a question at the top as to whether or not you would want to do a work session prior to August 17th. It's not a must and that's up to you guys, you guys just need to let me know on that. But I did want to provide you with just a timeline of what that'll look like to the budget process.
Thank you very much. Anybody would like a work session, please let us know.
Can I backtrack?
Sure.
To the bonds, real quick. I have a quick question on the bond comparison.
Yeah, sure.
Be the last sheet. So, our net was 3.2119, correct? And this one turned out 254, last one we did, and that included?
Yeah.
That included the cost of rate also, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we came out very good on that.
Yes, it definitely worked out in our favor and going rated was definitely the best call, you can kind of compare with not going rated or doing a private placement with the bank. In the long term, it saved us quite a bit of money in interest and so, yeah, that definitely worked out for us to go through the rating process, which was very detailed, very lengthy, something that was new to us and we haven't done in a little while, but it definitely worked out in our favor, so we're definitely glad that we went through it.
19, that was a private placement?
I'm sorry.
One in 19 was private, so that's why we did not?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any further? All right, the next, let's see, three items on the agenda, unless there's an objection, I would like to combine into one for voting purposes. This would be consideration to approve amendment policy 0167.1 regarding voting of the board and one regarding approval of amendment for board policy 6610 and approval of amendment for board policy 7455. These were informational items last month and so would Mr. Irwin or Dr. Sanders have anything they'd like to add to?
Pretty much what we said last month on these, at the first reading, would still be the same.
Take these three together, have a motion?
I'd move approval.
Moving, seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the consideration to approve Edgewood Early Childhood Center Handbook. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so last month, we approved the handbooks for the corporation and for all the schools. The Early Childhood Center, Edgewood Early Childhood Centers Handbook, the staff took a little extra time to work on revisions and so it wasn't ready for the board meeting in June, so we bring it to you tonight. And Mr. Wooden is here tonight if you have any questions. Or Mr. Wooden, if you have anything you want to add.
Let's get it on the table, do we have a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Moving, seconded. Do we have any questions? Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I negligently skipped the consideration to approve the Pepsi contract renewal number seven, so we'll go back to that, Dr. Sanders.
Yes, Mr. Hammond, our AD is here to speak to that.
This was our renewal year for Pepsi. Normally, we do a three-year contract and we usually talk to the different vendors in April on this. Well, with our situation and all, we didn't have a chance to do that, so I asked the Pepsi guy if he could give us a one-year contract. And I know Mr. Ackerman's a little frustrated with them here. We had a little vending problem that they didn't keep the machines tuned up as well as they should have and so we told him that it was kind of a one-year trial to get better faith back with us. As far as from the concession areas and everything, they've done a great job, just had a few little hiccups on the vending stuff, but like I said, I told him we had a couple strikes against him, that this next year they had to do a good job or else we'd probably look elsewhere. The contract this year is the exact same thing that we've had the last three years, all the numbers are the same. Christina looked over it, I think Robin May sent it to her and checked all that out, so it's just the same contract we've been going through the last few years.
Earl did not indicated that she has looked it over, so counsel has looked it over.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond, I move approval.
I'll second.
Seconded, any discussion?
Just a couple questions, so Mr. Hammond on that, is this a corporation contract or is it just junior high and high school?
It goes through the corporation. Each school gets a vending percent from the vending and also gets the money rebate per case sold through concessions. Each one gets their kickback.
Okay, then in that contract, there was a couple of lumps, dollars amount?
Yeah, we get $4,000 a year contract money and $1,000 in free product.
And that's just for the one-year contract? It's not pro-rated?
For each year of the, yes, for the one year this year.
Hopefully, they can step up and do the right thing this year.
Well, I think they will, I think they will. I've talked to other people and it's, most other people says that their vending's great and they have a little bit more issues with the concessions, but that's not been the case here, but I think he's looking toward getting it corrected. And he is an Edgewood graduate, so we'll tell him we'll pull his diploma if he does. Just a little pressure.
Any further questions? I do believe it was very prudent to go with a one-year contract. Very good. Anyway, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. President. Our next item is consideration to award the bid for the Edgewood Primary School Edition. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, and if technology works well, George Link, VPS architect, is on the line to go over his recommendation.
Can you hear me, Jerry?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. So, do you want me to proceed now, Jerry?
Yes, go ahead, George, go ahead and I, go ahead and present your recommendation for the Edgewood Primary School Edition.
Okay, I believe everybody should have received a copy of my award recommendation and the bid calculations from the rebid on both the primary project and the HBAC project. And tonight, I am recommending that the board award the primary project to Building Associates for the base bid and alternate numbers one, six and seven for a total award of $2,901,000. And then I would further recommend the board award the HBAC project to Commercial Services for the base bid for $1,984,900. These two projects were both rebid and through the rebidding process and the modifications that we made to the documents, the lump number for the savings for the corporation from the original bid was about $400,000.
Very good. Could you repeat the Building Associates' bid amount?
Their total bid amount, award amount would be $2,901,000.
Thank you, Mr. Link. Do we have a motion for, we'll take the Edgewood Primary School Edition first, for, to approve the bid award to Building Associates in the amount of $2,901,000?
I move approval. Second.
Seconded, any questions?
Yes, exactly, can you just briefly tell us what this section is? Is that the four classrooms?
Mr. Link, could you go through what is included in the building project for the primary school addition?
Okay, on the, it's a two-story addition similar to the connector that we did on the upper level, which is at the main level with the primary school. There are four preschool rooms, some, I always hate this term, but the lack of a term, gang restroom and some staff restroom, and then we have the stair and the elevator that will take you down to the lower levels. And it includes a large multipurpose room and then office space for the preschool administration in it and obviously the elevator and stairs exit down there. And then with that, there's also a new entrance drive that will come back and basically act as a cul-de-sac for buses and car traffic to come back and drop off there at the preschool and there's some parking, visitor parking there as well. We've set this up for the future, for a central future project of a preschool building there and this would just simply join that building with the primary and the intermediate school, just like the connector joined the two together.
If I could add to that and give those listening on cats and those in the audience a little history of where we started and where we're going. So, the preschool was in the building where the Boys and Girls Club is housed right now and we wanted to bring the students and the staff into EPS for a number of reasons. One, for the students and their parents to help them feel more part of EPS when they moved to kindergarten, it wouldn't be a strange place, it would feel like their school. And also to promote collaboration between the preschool teachers and the kindergarten teachers. And so, that's phase one, was to move them from where they were at the Boys and Girls Club into EPS. Phase two is this addition, which our plan is to build the facility and then hopefully outgrow it and we think we will. We had a waiting list, quite a lengthy waiting list this past year and I don't know how COVID's going to influence this year, but we really believe that we'll be able to grow the program because it just makes so much sense and will help our students have greater success in school because of the strong foundation we're giving them in preschool. So, this addition is actually a preschool connector and then like George said, the phase three is then to have a pre-K K-building and we may look at the grade configuration down the road, but that would be a separate, that would, the connector, the preschool connector is going to connect, according to our plan, to this pre-K K-building, which will, hopefully, we'll get that in around 2023.
So, are we doing the four classrooms on the end?
Yes.
We are, and that's part of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Of course, the nice thing about this is the flexibility. If, you know, if enrollment because of COVID or something would tend to decline, we would not necessarily, of course, do the next project or at least not right away. So, but we have the capability, if that does come about, to be able to make it a complement to what we already have and not redoing something. So, I really like that flexibility. It sets us up, or if we have the growth, we do it and that's great, but it's also, since it's a phase kind of approach, the next phase would come when and if it's warranted. Say that it's not a shoe-in that we're going to do that, it just depends on our situation over the next couple of years.
When is the project supposed to start?
This project?
Yes.
George, can you go over the timeline real quick on when?
We expect completion in time for the 2021, 22 school year, so basically a year from now.
Will they start right away or will they wait till spring?
No, they will start right away.
Okay.
They are dying to get going.
Are there any further questions?
George, this Brad Tucker, I got a couple of quick questions.
All right.
On the, your recommendation for the Building Associates, help me understand, you had a kind of section with certain things that you did not recommend them for, how did those different sections go?
The alternate there that we did not recommend, we're trying to stay within budget and protected, those are all items that we can come back and pick up during construction with either growth in the account through interest, just similar to the way we've done some of the other things from some of the other bond issues like picking up the tennis courts, resurfacing the track, those types of things and they're not things that are needs, they're more wants to a degree, but they're very easy to, things that we can say, all right, A, we've seen interest growth in our accounts here, we've got some extra money, let's apply that, so we would anticipate coming back to the board at a future date to get those things done, but then there's contracts.
Okay, all right.
The items that, there's two sets of sidewalks that are in there and then there's And then there's, uh, some casework along one of the walls from the classrooms that we did not, uh, uh, recommend at this time. And those, the type of casework it is, it's just simply some bookshelves that, uh, if, if the money was available for the end of the project, we could, uh, simply add those back in.
Okay. How's the, uh, how's the junior high project going as far as it, are they on time?
Um, actually, the middle school, did you say the middle school project?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Okay, um, that, uh, right now, I'm anticipating that multipurpose room will be ready for use, uh, after the Christmas break. And then the cafeteria and family consumer science room will be done next summer. So it, it's actually moving much, uh, much quicker than I anticipated.
So once again, that project involves, uh, a multipurpose room, uh, to,
Steam classroom.
Yes, uh, the multipurpose room could be, uh, utilized for our choirs and show choirs. Uh, we'll be, we'll have some seating capacity in there and they will be able to, to do their performances. And, uh, also, uh, steam or Makerspace Labs, uh, will, will, are also part of that project.
And then we're, uh, expanding the cafeteria, creating that outdoor dining space and
Yes.
doing the, uh, re- reconfiguring the, uh, family consumer science space. But those, those projects will be, that part of the project will be completed next summer when, uh, the kids are out of school.
Okay. Their patient, their, that projects are on, already been approved and are in construction right now.
Right.
Separate from what we're talking about as far as. Anything further? Any further questions?
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those, uh, not in favor, say aye. The pacifist five here. Got me out of my rhythm, okay. Um, the, so the, the next item would be, uh, look for a, a motion to award the bid for the HVAC upgrades, uh, to Commercial Services in the amount of $1,984,900. Motion?
I'll second.
Move and second. Any questions or on that project?
I just want to thank, thank, uh, George for making recommendations to reopen that bid and saving the school quite a bit of money on that, so thank you.
Here it is, thank you.
Now, uh, one thing you, you, and as, I, I, I want to be transparent here. Um, if you look back on the, on the original bid to this one, it looks like we saved almost $600,000. But the, the reality is that we shifted the full unit over into the full project because there was savings there and what we didn't end up having to do, so we moved that over. So the real savings was around $300,000, $350,000 on that project on the rebid.
Okay.
Still substantial.
Yeah, still, still. Thank you, still.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Link. Any further questions? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you again, Mr. Link.
We'll get, we'll, we'll get the contract drafted out and get them out of the mail to everybody, okay?
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, our next item, uh, would be Dr. Sanders, the RBB CSC reopening school, uh, report.
Yes, I just wanted to give the board an update of, of where we are, uh, right now. Uh, we, uh, are preparing still, uh, to, uh, open school on time on August 5th. Uh, however, uh, we, uh, continue to monitor the, the data. So I, I follow the data that's on the dashboard at the Indiana State Health Department website. Uh, once school starts, we will be, uh, tracking attendance and, uh, also, uh, attendance of teachers and students. Uh, and the other part of, of what we're doing and will be doing, uh, throughout the school year is, uh, working with the Monroe County Health Department. We, uh, from day one back, uh, in March, uh, we've, uh, pretty much every move that we've made, uh, we've had, uh, that, uh, plan, uh, viewed by the Monroe County Health Department. Uh, and oftentimes, uh, they will make suggestions and, and guidance and say, you might do this or that differently. And so we update our plan and then send it out. So, um, as we, uh, move in deeper into the school year, uh, and, uh, I mean, I'm gonna speak to this a little bit later, but, uh, as we move into the school year, we need to be prepared, uh, for this plan to change. Uh, it's a living document. Um, it's already changed several times, uh, from the time we, we put it out. Uh, because we, we are constantly looking how to improve it. We're, we're constantly looking at the data. We, uh, do, try to do as much research as possible in terms of, uh, paying attention to, uh, the Department of Education, uh, with the health departments. Uh, we, um, connected with a number of school corporations. Uh, and I have, uh, several conversations a week with, uh, various superintendents, uh, looking at their plans. We've shared our plans. Uh, so when we, uh, see something that will, in another corporation, that might work well for RBB, uh, we, we put that in, in our plan and, and vice versa. I mean, all superintendents are, are doing that. Um, uh, so we have opened up, uh, registration, uh, early, uh, in order to, uh, get an idea of, of what kind of staffing that we would need. And, uh, as of today, uh, we had, we've had 1,878 students to register. That's 70.18%. Uh, and of those, uh, 1,878, 1,677 of those, uh, or 89.3% have chosen in, the in-school option. Uh, 201 students, uh, I should say probably their parents, uh, chose virtual school and that's a 10.7%. And, uh, so we still have, uh, 798 students, uh, still to register. Uh, but you have to remember that, uh, this is usually done, uh, within a couple of weeks before the start of the school year. Uh, so, um, I'm feeling pretty good, uh, at this point. Um, and, uh, we are, uh, actually, uh, principals are working very hard. Now, we have some more solid numbers, uh, because we know how many, uh, are choosing virtual at each grade level. So the principals are taking that information. They're revising their, uh, virtual program. Uh, it, it'll also inform our staffing needs, uh, and making sure that we have, uh, the right, uh, staff available. You know, the, the bottom line is, uh, you know, RBB is always about quality and, uh, that's what our, we're, we're trying to achieve. Um, it's not going to be perfect, uh, because it's really a plan, uh, that, uh, has to be flexible, uh, according to the situation. Uh, we're still going to be offering the in-school and the virtual as a delivery of instruction. And, uh, parents have until this Friday, July 24th, to choose virtual. Uh, however, uh, parents will have until August 14th to change their mind. And, uh, they need to contact their building principal if they decide to, if they chose in-school and want to switch to virtual or if they've picked virtual and want to switch to in-school. Uh, they can do that by contacting, uh, their building principal. Um, or Matt Irwin, our business manager, is, uh, actively seeking, uh, funding and donations. Uh, we've received, uh, nearly $250,000, $246, is it, Matt? Yeah, $246,000 in CARES Act funds. Um, uh, we just turned in Friday, our grant application for, uh, the Gears funding, which is Governor's Emergency Education Relief. And, uh, so, uh, that will help us, uh, to, uh, if we get that money, that'll help us, uh, with, uh, device availability. So, uh, we would be able to purchase. If they gave us all the money we requested, we would be able to, uh, go one-to-one, uh, first grade and up, is it? And, uh, and then also help us with connectivity and then the educator capacity, uh, so we could, uh, provide our teachers more training. So that would be a big deal if we get that money. And then Matt is also, uh, we're tracking our expenses, uh, to get compensated, uh, through FEMA. Uh, and the fact of the donations and purchases, uh, we have, uh, 20,000 masks available uh, for students and staff. Now, we've asked our, our families to provide, uh, the facial covering, uh, but we want to be able to have, uh, plenty, uh, on hand for students who might not be able to afford to purchase a facial covering or, uh, can't find one or, uh, whatever the reason, uh, they, they lost it. We just want to have, uh, those all readily available for our students. So, uh, Matt's done an extraordinary job and, uh, I think that's pretty good about having 20,000 masks available. Um, our custodians maintenance continue to, uh, conduct an extensive cleaning of our facilities and our buses. And we have, uh, plans in place, uh, for, uh, sanitizing, uh, equipment and facilities and buses, uh, once the school year gets started. Uh, we have a supplier of the, the materials, uh, and sanitizer that we'll need and we have backups to the, uh, supplier. So we're trying to be prepared for everything. Now, uh, I appreciated the comments made, uh, earlier. Uh, I, I have, I've offered and, uh, people have taken me up on that offer to email me. And, uh, I think that's a good thing because it really, uh, helps you to, uh, think and consider, uh, all possibilities and, uh, and believe me, I, I listen very carefully to, uh, and read very carefully when I receive the emails. And, uh, we utilize that information to guide our thinking, uh, as, as well as obviously the, the health experts. Um, so, uh, the, the reopening plan is a living, living document and it has to be. Uh, I know that there, there might be some other plans out there that, uh, have, uh, very detailed information for each possible level. Uh, but, uh, we have to know that, that any plan in the state of Indiana, probably the whole country, uh, that you can make a very detailed plan, but that would, was, that's going to change. Uh, because the situation's going to change. Uh, we're, we've spent, uh, as much time as, as we, we possibly could have, uh, this summer, getting to where we are right now. But we're not finished. Uh, we are meeting, our principals are meeting, uh, tomorrow. Uh, and we're going to talk about the data. We're going to talk about, uh, what, uh, possibilities we might have, uh, before the start of the school year, any possible revisions to our plan. Uh, we are talking about, uh, we'll be talking about, uh, some contingency options. Um, some school corporations have gone to a hybrid, uh, where 50% of the students come, uh, at any given time. And, uh, that is something that's, uh, under consideration, uh, as a possible option. So, uh, our principals and I, we're going to work on, uh, a hybrid idea in the event that sometime this school year, that's the best option to go to. We want to be prepared. Uh, we don't want to get to that situation and say, oh, wow, a hybrid situation, uh, a hybrid option right now would be the, the best course of action, but we haven't done any work on it. So we want to be prepared so we can move to that option if necessary. Uh, we, uh, we may move from where we are now to, uh, a ver, total B, uh, virtual, uh, a combination of e-learning and virtual school. Uh, we, uh, may be able to relax and loosen things up if the data, uh, says that we can and the guidance from the health folks say that we can. Um, so, uh, what I've tried to, to tell, uh, my message to just about everybody is that we need, all of us need to be flexible. Uh, uh, our teachers need to be flexible in terms of, uh, being, having, uh, e-learning lessons ready to go at a given notice. Uh, I, I hope our parents are planning that, uh, we, we may put out an announcement that the next day or the next couple of days, we have to, uh, close, uh, a school. And, and so they need to be prepared for childcare. Uh, we just have to consider, uh, many, uh, possibilities and be prepared for that. Uh, and, and one of the reasons why, uh, you have to be prepared for the unexpected is, um, uh, when a student or a staff, uh, has a positive test or somebody in their family has a positive test, uh, our first course of action is going to be contacting the, the Indiana State Health Department and the Monroe County Health Department. And then, uh, they will conduct contact tracing and determine, uh, who that person interacted with. Based on the contact tracing, that'll tell us, um, to what degree, uh, we might have to have closure. Uh, we, we may find out that that, whoever it is, might not have had any contact with, uh, anybody at RBB or might be a limited number, might be just a classroom, uh, or just one school. Uh, so based on that contact tracing, based on the conversations with the health department, uh, that'll determine what we do at, at that point and then we would communicate that, uh, to our families. So, um, that's why I keep saying it has to be a, a, a really flexible plan. We have to be prepared for contingencies, uh, because, uh, we're, we're just going to base what we do on the situation at that time. And we're going to do what's best for our students and our staff and their health. Um, that's a long-winded, uh, report on our reopening school plan. Uh, there's a lot going on and, uh, we're not going to stop, uh, until this thing is gone.
Any questions for Dr. Sanders' report?
No, I just appreciate you going through the, all of that with the families each, uh, before meeting because they need to hear what we're doing for their children and, and our educators, so thank you for that.
Also, I would just like to say to the parents out there, it's very important for parents to, uh, get excited about their children coming back to school. Children don't really comprehend, be honest with you, I don't know if I comprehend what's going on. Um, so the fear and, um, the negative comments about what can happen to kids if they go to school, because I have spoken with some young children, it's a little concerning to me that they're talking about scary things that they just really don't understand. It's important to get them back in school unless you're able and you choose to homeschool your children or whatever you choose to do. But for the majority of children, going back to school is the important thing to do. And I think it's important for you to think about preparing your child for wearing their mask at school. I don't know, I mean, this is just our county, how it is now. And a lot of people don't think their children should have to wear it, but they're going to have to. They're out in public. And so that's not a strange and scary thing when they get to school. Uh, it's just what they do and children adapt very well. So I think it's important for children, uh, parents in the next couple of weeks to just make things normal about excitement, about going back to school and address, you know, teaching them how to wear the mask.
I do appreciate all the hard work and, and, uh, I understand how you can't have a very detailed plan on every option or everything that we might have to do. I mean, you have to be considering it and you have to be prepared, but that would just keep changing all the time. So, um, I do believe that, uh, Dr. Sanders, you are doing an excellent job of keeping, um, So I do believe that, Dr. Sanders, you are doing an excellent job of keeping the parents and the community informed of where we are right now and what we're doing, and keeping everyone informed of the changes as they occur. So really appreciate your leadership on that, and of course, it involves all the corporation, I mean, all the administration. I know the teachers are getting together and working on plans of how they'll deal with their grade level and things like that as well. So there is a considerable amount of effort going in from all sides, and I'll just really appreciate everyone's hard work on that. I think we're doing a great job. I think we're doing as best we can, and thank you so much for leading that.
And everyone is. You know, we've gotten a lot of input, and I really, I seriously understand the anxiousness that parents feel in trying to make these decisions. They're tough decisions. I think all of us would like to have a crystal ball to be able to know what is the right decision. So one thing is for sure, and I put it in one of my recent letters, is, you know, our parents, our staff, our community, they care deeply for our students, and they want the best for our students, and I think that's a pretty awesome thing to say about our community.
Hey, our next item is to approve revisions to our reopening school plan, so Dr. Sanders, if you could.
Yes, so on the corporation plan, which I've already mentioned, is that parents will have until July 24th to choose a virtual school academy for their preferred delivery of instruction, and that parents may change their choice for delivery of instruction by contacting their child's principal by August 14th. That'll give us the first eight days of the school year to see how it goes at school, or see how it's going with the virtual school academy, and will give parents a chance to make those changes. I also wanted to point out by a parent, and I appreciated that, and I told her so, that for the virtual school academy, I just wanted to point out that that will, for K5, that'll be taught by an Indiana licensed teacher. We've already posted that position, and in the posting was a requirement for that person to be a licensed teacher, and also the support teachers will be our own RBB teachers who are already licensed with the state of Indiana. The Early Childhood Center changed their plan for water bottles, so now the plan will read that students will bring personal water bottles to school each day, and water bottles will be provided as needed. Water bottles will go home each day to be washed, and water fountains will not be used. That's the new language. And then we didn't have any changes at the primary school. At the intermediate school, we added the desk shields will be used in grades three through five, and since we'll have the desk shields in place, students will be able to get a mask break while they're at their seat and behind their desk shield. The junior high had no changes, and at the high school, we went from a seven-period day to a three- or four-period day. Each class period will be 75 to 85 minutes. There will be a break taken during each class period. Students will be permitted to leave the classroom for emergency circumstances only. So those are the revisions so far. There'll be more to come.
We have a motion to approve the-
I move approval.
I'll second.
You seconded. Any discussion? All those favors say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much again, Dr. Sanders. Our next item is consideration to approve the ROI Ready Schools Grant Agreement. That's exciting. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so last month, we made that announcement after a year-long effort to develop our implementation plan that had input from several, several parents who did the surveys, and the students who did the surveys and interviews, and staff, and we were awarded the grant from ROI for $249,778.94, and so tonight, you're just be, you're asked, you're being asked to approve the grant agreement, and that's been reviewed by Ferguson Law.
I move approval. Second.
Good, seconded. Any discussion? All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. What a wonderful addition to our direction. Our next item is consideration of Contract Amendment Number Two of the contracted bus routes, and Mr. Irwin.
This is, this is the Second Amendment. We did one earlier in the year that dealt with the end of the 1920 school year, but this is an amendment that deals with pay rate during times of closure for the school. And so this is with our contracted route owners, and we have four of those, and so what we had, what we had worked out is that during a school closure of three or more consecutive days, we would reduce rate of pay by fuel costs. There's a fuel escalation clause within that contract, which stipulates the way that's figured each month, based on the bid specs that they did when they bid on the route. So there's three years left on those contracts, and so we did not have anything in the contracts prior to everything going on that dealt with something like this, obviously with e-learning coming about. And so we felt like with the three or more consecutive days, that dealt with kind of something like we're dealing with now with COVID, with those long-term closures, and it still protected those contracted route owners that still have to make bus payments and have employees of their own, that they could still take those, but they're not expending things on fuel or wear and tear on buses that they typically would bid in their specs. So it was a fair compromise for both sides so that we could protect the interest of both parties. So I ask for your approval.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Good, seconded. Any discussion?
I assume this is the same process it was before, where you chatted with them?
Yeah, so this is something I do want to thank them for moving in on a tight timeline. I want to thank Audrey Myers, Director of Transportation, who they have a great deal of respect for, as she's had a great deal of input on this as far as what was fair and what worked for both sides, so that we, like I said, we could protect the interest because we don't, you know, we want to protect them and their ability to carry out the things that they have to with their business, but also with the interest of the school corporation so they're not making more money in a time like this when they're not providing that service.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item is consideration of virtual school curricular rental fees. Terrible?
Yeah, so again, this is something that we had talked about in our administrative meetings as we looked at the virtual school options and what our rents and fees would be, also taking a look at what they were for the in-school option. Obviously, they need to be different for the virtual option because it will look a little bit different, and so we did tailor those rents and fees based on the curriculum and the things that those students will be using to make sure that they were fair and applicable, and also we made sure that it followed the IDOE guidelines as far as what it is that we could charge in a given period of time based on the curricular material.
We have a motion to approve?
I move approval.
Okay. Good, seconded. Any discussion? Appreciate it. It's interesting, the domino effect that all this has, that you're doing a virtual school, you have to adjust things, rental fees and things, so there's a lot, I keep saying there's a lot that goes into this, and we appreciate all the hard work of everyone. Good, seconded. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Our next item is consideration to approve the occupational and physical therapist contracts. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, Board. These are annual contract renewals for two occupational therapists and one physical therapist. These contracts reflects, they reflect the increase that was given to all classified staff, as approved by the board last December, and so I just recommend your approval of the renewal of these contracts.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Rules. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is consideration to approve purchase of intercom systems for Edgewood Intermediate School and Edgewood Primary School. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so these intercom systems at both schools are in bad shape and frankly are not working, and they need to be replaced by the start of the school year. Rick Routen, our Director of Technology, has done his research. Rick, I don't know if you want to come up and say anything about this, but you see his recommendation in the board packet, and so I'll let Rick maybe say anything else.
Evening. So yeah, what Dr. Sanders was mentioning is the EIS and EPS intercom paging system has been down for quite a while. Mainly, the EPS was just failed this past year, or this year, school year, and the EIS failed a couple of years ago, but just has a limited amount of bell system. So with the idea of getting one vendor to come in and do everything and get the schools back up and running, we're going to be going up to better system along with flexibility and computer-driven calendaring and control of the pages in the school and outside. So the people that live near the schools, we can actually turn off the intercoms outside so they don't hear the bells go off after 3:00 in the afternoon and through the weekends and stuff like that. So it's going to give us more flexibility, and also it has a modular effect, which means that we can add on to it as we expand and grow, along with other capabilities that we just couldn't take the option of right now. So it's just something that we really need to get back into the schools and get the teachers' bell system to know when to transfer. Maybe not as much with the kids this year, but definitely will be for the time that we go back to full, regular school.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
Good, seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Routen, thanks for all your time with this, and when you mentioned the modular part, I assume that they understand we're adding on at the junior high as we speak, and that is that going to be, there's no way they can do that in the next three weeks, so will they come back as soon as it's done, I assume?
The junior high is separate from this particular project.
It's all separate?
This is strictly for the EIS and EPS school only.
Okay.
We haven't addressed the junior high and that part of the project yet, for the fact that we have to get these guys going again. Each junior high has a bell system, and it's, and it's working today, but we just have to expand on to it every weekend.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
That's fine.
So when did you say this would be done?
We asked the contractor if they can get it done by August the 5th. They're going to do everything in their powers to try to get it done by August the 5th with working evenings and weekends, but as we all know, product to get in takes a little bit more time these days, so we're going to do our best.
Okay.
Will these be tied so that there's an announcement at both buildings because of the connector that go through both, or?
Yes. So we're working it to where we're adding additional speakers to accommodate if there's a joint message, it can go across, but right now, if you're in an EIS dedicated room, you're only going to hear those messages, and if you're in an EPS room, dedicated room, you're going to only get those messages. But we're making the common hallway both because we didn't know what to do about the hallways, so we're sort of playing with that, and we'll do some configuration work after we get it installed.
With the, we just approved the award of the bid for the addition on to the primary school, does that, is that, of course, it's not built, so it's not included.
It is not included in this particular project that we're doing today. That will have to be something that will add on to the project as, since it was just awarded. It will have to come under another project scope.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Then we use the existing, the existing wiring, we could still use it, though.
We're going to use the existing wire that's in the school today to power the speakers, and so that saved us a tremendous amount of money. Going forward, we'll look at the cost options for the new connector portion of the primary school and see which way we go, either the Ethernet, or it could still be standard stereo cabling.
Good.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Routen, thank you, Dr. Sanders. Okay, our next action item, and last action item, would be consideration to approve the Edgewood Junior High School Athletic Guidelines.
Right, so at the special board meeting that we had on July 6th, we approved the high school plan, and the junior high high school was still being worked on, and John Siglin is here tonight. John, you want to come up and share a few words about the plan?
I think if you guys look at our plan, you're going to notice that it's very similar to what the high school looks like because we felt for continuity's sake, the amount of thought that went into the high school's plan, along with, you know, the junior high was part of that process and those conversations, we felt like it was the most appropriate thing to do to follow lockstep of the high school, and so our plan is just very similar to what the high school's got. That'll remove some confusion for parents as to what they're trying to, when they have kids in multiple buildings, what they're trying to work through in this process, and so our, our plan is very similar to what the high school's proposed, three-step plan in phases, you know, as the plan progresses, safety measures change a little bit until we get to the point of competition, and then we kind of are following the state guidelines as well as we get to that point. IHSA, I'm sure, is changing things as we speak, and so we're just watching those closely and working with Mr. Hammett to make sure that we're doing the best we can for our junior high athletes as well.
If I remember correctly, the high school plan was consistent with IHSA?
Yes.
Any questions? Are lots getting on the table? Have a motion?
I move approval.
Good, seconded. Any questions?
So this is kind of like, we're still in this fluid, like, where they can change, have the ability to change without having to come back to us, correct?
Correct. Which marching band's already changed, correct, at the high school?
We, right, we, the band, marching band season was canceled, but we will be having, I know the band is working on doing some, hopefully some, some types of concert that would be in line with the Monroe County orders and with the approval of the health department, but they would like to do some types of presentations and performances, given a certain situation, so that students will have at least some experience this year.
Further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now, Dr. Sanders, the superintendent's report.
Sure. I just want to go back to the whole situation that we're dealing with, and by the way, we have the best administrators, our principals, many of them have worked beyond their contract, all of them have, and for those who were able to get away on a family vacation, we often did a lot of virtual calls with them, and they gave up, their family was waiting to go do whatever they were going to do that day, waiting for them to get done with a meeting, and they've done so without complaint, and so I just, I just want to thank- And so I just, I just want to thank all of them for their hard work. You know, the 2020, 21 school year certainly is going to present us with, with many great challenges. Believe it or not, back on March 25th, I sent a, an email to the RBB staff, a note of encouragement, we were just getting started with, with e-learning. And I referred to one of my favorite movies, Apollo 13. And I shared with them a video clip, I'm not going to show that tonight, but it's a, it was a clip, if you remember the movie, the Apollo crew, there was an explosion and at some point they, their oxygen levels were going down and carbon dioxide was going up and they needed to build a new filter. But the problem was that, I mean, they could get somebody to the moon, but they created a system where they had to get a square peg to fit into a round hole. And one of my favorite scenes in the movie is that the systems, cruise systems team comes in, there's a big table and they take a box full of materials and they throw them out on the table. And they say that the people upstairs handed this one to us and we got to come through. And what I like about this scene is nobody is complaining, nobody is saying, why do we have to do this? Nobody is saying, I'm sorry, but I don't think this is the right thing to do. If you see it in the movie, they all start to get to work and they roll up their sleeves and they just get to work. And at the end of that scene, you hear somebody say, well, let's build a filter, so I'm going to go get the coffee. And I think at this point, we've been working really hard to get our reopening plan to where it is today. But it's time for all of us, board, me, our principals, teachers, parents, even students, it's time for all of us to roll up our sleeves and get to work and, and do what we have to do to make sure that, that we're providing our students with a quality education and with as much safety measures in place to keep, to provide our students with a safe environment. And now there's a lot of different opinions on how to get that done. But as we move forward, we're, we're at a point now where we don't have, we won't have time to do more surveys. We won't have time to get more, find out what the reaction is going to be to our plan. We're going to have to make our, the best decision possible, roll up our sleeves and do what's best for our kids. And I was, I was trying to think of an analogy and I had my own and I was talking to Doug Yules today, president of the Teachers Association, and he had a better analogy than, than I did, so I told him I was going to steal it. And it's about a rowing team. Now, I don't know if you know this or not, but the U.S. Olympic rowing team has won 11 world and Olympic championships over the years. And they did so because they're very precise in how well they work together. Can you imagine if this rowing team, if each member of the rowing team decided, I'm sorry, we, I don't really agree with the direction our boat's going, I'm going to row this way. And somebody else is going to say, I'm sorry, I don't like the way the team, the direction our boat is going, I'm going to row this way. If you could get that picture in your mind, at least I do when I think about that, I envision the boat going around in circles and not getting anywhere. And I just love this community, I love RBB. I'm so lucky to have had the opportunity to come here because I'm so impressed with what we've accomplished in the few short years that I, I've been here and even before I was here. And, and I really believe that as we move forward, whether we're doing virtual or in school, they're all RBB students. And we all need to work together. Our students and parents who'll be working from home, our teachers and students who'll be working in school, we all need to work together in order for us to have a successful school year. We talked about ready schools a few minutes ago. And I hope we can get back to that. Now, I've, I've talked to our ready schools folks and their team players and they're going to talk to their principals about how they could help with getting students caught up from last year and, and helping with the other unusual, unprecedented circumstances we might be under. But we want, we're doing these safety measures, the masks and having the specials come to the classroom and doing all the work we're doing with virtual school. So as quickly as possible, we can get back to implementing the great things that we, we are excited about in our ready schools initiative. And all the other amazing prod, project-based learning activities and, and all the great extracurricular, just all things that RBB is known for. We want to get back to that point as soon as possible. And to do that, we all have to roll up our sleeves and get to work and do what we have to do, so. That's my superintendent's report for tonight.
Thank you very much. Now it's time for RBB EA comments.
I don't believe Mr. Yules, he had an unexpected situation this afternoon, so.
Well, we missed their attendance here. We really appreciate our Teachers Association and the relationship we have with them and how well we work with them, so. Their attendance. So now to board member comments. I'll just start down on the left, Mr. Tucker.
Thanks for the board meeting this evening. Thank you, Dr. Sanders and your team for all the work you've put forth to continue to prepare and make adjustments with this coronavirus plan. I want to congratulate Mr. Brewer, Mrs. Kinnear for the retirement this evening. Spent some time with Mr. Brewer during his years here at the high school and he was a, a great staff member and had an impact on a great number of kids, so congratulations to him and to Rhonda as well and hopefully they have a great retirement. I want to also just reiterate in a shorter version of what Dr. Sanders mentioned about the flexibility of the village, how flexible we all have to be. It is a village, it helps raise these kids and we all have to work together. There's so many different splinters involved with this and be patient with each other and have, have confidence in, in your administrators here at the school corporation because they work very hard and very long hours behind the scenes trying to put together the best plan. Somebody else mentioned the word resiliency and I absolutely agree with that, as kids, kids especially are resilient. So I look forward to watch them come back in here and if we have to make, make changes, then we have to make changes, but it's going to be for the safety of the kids. And then as the, as the parent mentioned before, a lot of contingency plans are, are being worked on behind the scenes and I, I know when I get another phone call from Dr. Sanders, this is another, another thought that has come up and there's so many contingencies that you don't know that may or may not happen. And we try to prepare the best we can and then be, be ready to make adjustments. So again, be patient, thanks for your flexibility and I look forward to August the 5th.
What you said about everything, I wanted to say. No, thank you, parents, for this, we, we get how difficult this is, you know? And I said at the last meeting that we had, you know, I'm a parent too, I have a one that's going into high school, one that's in junior high. I understand where you guys are, I get it. We just have to, we have to bridge together for our children and that's what our goal is, is to, you know, propel them through this difficult time, keep them going in the direction they need to educationally. But we do appreciate each one of you and I know that I have gotten many, many emails. I haven't gotten back to everybody, but my plan is to do that. But understand that the changes come rapidly for us. So a question that you may ask, there isn't an answer anymore for that or we're moving in a different direction and that's just the way it has to be right now and we can't, we can't change that. But we appreciate you so much in trusting us with your children and our corporation. I think it's going to be a great year, it's going to be different, but it's still going to be a great year. And thank you so much to the donors. The, the mask and the hand sanitizer and I know that one thing I kept hearing from parents is, what if I can't afford, what if I can't? We are going to be able to help you and your, your child if, if that's, we're not going to let them go without. We're going to keep them safe, that's what our jobs are, all of our jobs. So thank you so much for the donors, we appreciate that so much. I think that's it for me.
Mr. Durnel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Jerry, I'm so glad to hear things are going so well. My career has, I've been around poor leadership, mediocre leadership and great leadership. And looking at you, your principals, assistant principals, I think you all fall in that great leadership bracket. I really appreciate how you do things, it's nice to talk to you. I know sometimes I come in, maybe think I'm just looking around, that's what I am looking around, I just like to be around the kids, so. But I want to thank you all for your, your leadership that you've showed to us through this whole mess we've been in, so. Thank you, Jerry, thank you and thank you, principals here tonight, I appreciate you, so.
Thank you, Jimmy.
I too want to thank the donors. People are thinking outside the box. I don't know if people request some of these things or they hear a student say, you know, we don't have enough of this in our classroom, but anyone that wants to do something to help out, these young families could use help with things like sanitizer and masks and school books and whatever. There's lots of things in a, a public school corporation that you can do donations. I, I'm in the class of 1974 at Edgewood and we have an online group with a big majority of our students, the students that are on there. They said something the other day and people were laughing about different things that happened that made me think about our situation now. Things change and we are going to move on and we are going to do fine. Somebody asked, does anybody ever remember going to school and meeting your teacher, even knowing who your teacher's name is? We got on a school bus as first graders on the first day of school and got off a school bus and we made it through. It's changed a lot since then and now people get children and it's a good thing to get to know your teacher and everything. Things like that may have to change. The next generation will be looking back and saying, remember when they used to do this and that? Everybody makes it through. The school corporation's done a fantastic job of preparing so that your students and your children, the students and your children will learn. And that's what it's about, making sure the children learn while they are here. So put some trust in them, I think they're going to do a fantastic job and welcome back to school.
Thank you. The, we're going to really, we really will miss Rhonda Kinnear and C. Brewer and say what Larry Demoss, Mr. Ackerman said, being gone as well. But we, we still have great staff and they'll, they'll step up and fill those roles, but we really appreciate our retirees. Just want to say, trust us, I know that's hard for people to do, with your kids especially. But everyone up here on the board, everyone in the school corporation loves those kids and we'll do the best we can. We're going to work hard, we're going to keep adapting to what we learn, what we know, what we find out as, as things go on, as things change. But it's, this will end, we don't know exactly when it'll end, but this coronavirus will end, this pandemic will end. And my wife is telling all, she's a teacher, she's telling the kids she had and, and other kids that, you know, you're going to look back at this and remember when, you know, like we look back, remember the, the blizzard of 78? You know, it's going to be, well, do you remember the pandemic of, you know, COVID-19? And, and, and it, but it will end and we are going to do absolutely the best we can for your students here. And so, so please, trust us, stay with us, keep, keep, you know, our, our, our school system is doing a great job with, with having so many alternatives, with having the virtual school in addition to, to, to face-to-face classes. They are making preparations if there are temporary closures and then how to deal with those. So parents, just please, please trust us because we're, we are doing the best we can and we do have some of the best people in this corporation. They care and they're, they're going to do everything they can to keep your kids safe. The, been hearing, with my wife being a teacher, I've been hearing a lot of the creativity that's going on in planning for this year. This year will be different, but it will still be special for these, these, our students. Our teachers, our administrators, our staff are going to make sure that they have a quality education and, and get the care and support that they need and deserve and they'll get that. So just please hang in there with us, we'll all get through this if we do it together. So let's just stay together. With that, this meeting is adjourned and have a wonderful evening.